Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is six o'clock on Monday, November the 18th, and this is the regular school board meeting of Independent School District Number 882. Please rise as you were able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's
We have our tentative agenda for the evening, and we will make our tentative agenda permanent.
So moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the tentative agenda as our agenda for the evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Agenda passes six zero. We have no citizens' comments this evening. Moving on to item number five, we have our consent agenda items. This is approval of minutes from November 4th and November the 8th, personnel matters, our bill summaries, and a quarterly update on our finances from our Director of Business Services. Members of the board receive these while in advance and have the opportunity to ask questions. We typically move these as a group, and so I will open it for any discussion. Finding none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes six zero. Moving on to item number six, our collaborative connections. We have a resolution for acceptance of gifts. Superintendent Olson will discuss.
All right, bringing forward these five donors here. Pat Michaud from Horace Mann, $2,000 for a staff breakfast donation that happened on our last workshop. Monticello Rotary Club, eight dozen hats and gloves valued at $528 for the students at our three elementaries to keep their hands and feet, hands and head warm with the Warm Hearts Project. Sweep Home, $640 donated to help the items in our high school magic closet. The closet has personal items and clothing items to help students in need. Hoagland Body and Equipment, $500 also go into our magic closet to help students in need. And the COP Family Foundation, $1,000 to support the students who are 18, 22 years old in their transition program called the Connect Five Transition Program at our Eastview Education Center.
And as always, we'd like to thank all of our community partners for being so generous to support various groups and initiatives within our school district. We do have a resolution for the acceptance of gifts.
Therefore be resolved by the Monticello School District 882 to gratefully accept the following donations: Patrick Mashad, Horace Mann, $2,000 for staff breakfast; Monticello Rotary Club, eight dozen hats and gloves for the elementary school Warm Hearts Project; Sweep Home, 640 monetary donation valued in items valued at 500 for the magic closet; Hoagland Body and Equipment, $500 for the magic closet; and COP Family Foundation, $1,000 to support 18 through 22 program for Connect Five.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Casey Root, resolution read by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor of accepting the donations as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. And the donation resolution passes six zero. Moving on to our transportation update, we have with us this evening Joe Kunkel from Hoagland Transportation and Superintendent Eric Olson. They're going to give us a transportation update. Welcome, Mr. Kunkel and Mr. Olson.
All right, we will come in and out here, but I just want to thank Joel for working with us for about two years now on this project. And as we come to get it to a spot that I think we're getting more and more comfortable with and proud of, we've had an opportunity to run it by Board Member Jamie Seaborn to allow her to see our, the data from all the transportation rides. So we'll just jump into a very short presentation, just to give a little update of where everything's at. As everybody knows, on the board, with the big school change, start time change this year, we have a new way of transporting children. So it's, everything that we knew in the community and how we transported is now different. And it's different because the trends and all the planning that went into the decades of school start and dismissal times that we had, they are no longer in effect. And so a whole new way of transporting, including several hybrid buses that we have, just like other communities around us or throughout the state or nation, we've chose to try get to some of our far out areas with kindergarten preschool through grade 12 bussing. And so we've done a lot of different things this year, and now we're getting the times down to where we had intended them to be, in hopes that we could be, start the school year, but we had to get through some bridge construction and some other challenges, but now we do believe that we have them to a spot that are consistent with what we've had in the past.
So if you were to just look at these, you would think that's pretty amazing bus ride times, but you got to remember that when you drop off probably 2,000 students within the city limits, it really helps those times. But these times include the ones when we go to St. Paul, they include the routes that go to St. Cloud, they include all of our out of district students that we pick up, bring back here, so that if we were to take all those out, those numbers would even be lower and better than that yet. Obviously, there are some longer rides because average is average, so there are some longs and there are some short ones. I would say that 95, 96% of our people have one short, one long. There are some people that have long, long, and a lot of times that has to play into, do you live on a road like County Road 39 East where they put the middle turn lane in, you can't legally cross kids there anymore. They have to be off door side, picked up door side. So if you live on the north side of 39 going out of town in the afternoon, we can't drop you off on the way by. Even if the parents want us to, we can't do it. So we have to go out, come back. So that's why some people have longer bus rides. And we, and we checked with Superintendent Olson on some other ones also where it might be a hazardous area where there's a hill in kind or down climb, and the parents said, no, it's okay for my kid to get on or off there, but we've just decided, no, that's not okay. We're gonna, we're gonna go by the safety practices first and parent practices second. I would say that for the most part, I'm down to one or two emails a week now. I had one today, and we're down to where we're giving parents options. So there is another option. So let's say you want your kindergartner to be home a little bit quicker because we do have a bus leaving Pinewood right away and one that leaves Little Mountain right away, but they might not be home with their older siblings. And there are parents that are turning that down and say, you know, we're okay with our hourish bus ride, and we'll take the longer ride because then they can be home with their older sibling.
And while, you know, the length of times and the average length of times look great, it's also important to look at the range of ride times. And so when you look at these range, the number is including the community school. So let me explain that a little bit. As you know, that we were trying to get all times down to an hour, but I think it's just important to start reporting exactly the length of times. When we had Eastview opened up, we were not counting the shuttle time from Eastview to Pinewood or from Eastview to Little Mountain, and we weren't doing that on purpose. It just, there wasn't a change in the times, and so we were, the bus routes were started at the community school, and it was a shuttle, so it wasn't their bus ride, it was the shuttle ride from the kindergarten center to the community school. And so we're just going to start reporting these as they are so that we create that new standard, but please remember that we have had that for the last seven years that Eastview has been open. So, so right now, I'm reporting those. And the slide is, you know, our range of times are anywhere from one minute to one hour 18 minutes in the morning, or one minute to one hour 24 minutes. But like I said, these routes now align with the approach that we followed since Eastview became a kindergarten preschool center. The longer bus rides are predominantly either in areas like Joel described of being areas where you might have to go past a stop that we used to be able to make, but in order just to make a safe stop, we have to go past it and come back. And usually, they're in the western portion of our district. So if you look at our district and you just start like at the middle school and go up to far ends of our district, you're, you know, getting into that 22 to 25 minute rides, depending on which route you take. And so it's important, just, just a route, a ride itself to one spot is 25 minutes. And so that's without any stops or picking up children. So I think, you know, this is where we are currently at right now, and like Joe said, safety is always our number one key, but trying to get these times down to the spot where we have been for the last few years, we're proud that we're there. I've only had one email since the day after the fall break, so I've went several weeks without working on bus issues because of the school start time or construction changes. I have worked on some discipline things for some students, but that is not because of the school start time.
Is this in hour 24 from when school ends, or is it when the bus leaves the parking lot?
When school ends.
School ends.
Yeah.
You know, and one, one interesting thing that we found out the other day, because in our routing software, if you draw the path, a lot of times it just picks up the kit. It does, you don't manually put them on the route, it picks them up automatically. Well, all of a sudden, the driver was saying, well, my kindergartner on my bus is wondering why he can't have his older siblings at the, at Pinewood ride with them. Oh, that's weird. Yeah, they should be able to. So how polite was it of that family just to go, oh, I guess that's how it works, that my kindergartner's going to be brought home on one bus, and my Pinewood kid's going to be home on another bus, and it was like 20 minutes difference. So we said, oh, well, you know, you can have the other two ride on, and they were so happy. But I hope that, and this would be my big message to everybody, I hope we didn't wear you down so much that you've given up, because if you have a concern, let us know, because that one that called today or emailed today, we had a solution for it by the afternoon. We have two more bigger bus changes that are coming out this week that should help some AM times for two, two vehicles. So I just want people to not give up. So if they are concerned about their ride or are concerned about discipline or are concerned about anything on the bus, you just got to contact us because we'll work on it, we'll, we'll try to make it better.
And then finally, just a reminder of the communication that we've been doing, and I'm only talking about since the start of the school year, but we have had two town hall meetings, and we have, we offered a digital format of collecting information right around the town hall meeting time, and we've done an all, an additional transportation survey right after that. So we've done, you know, two opportunities to come in and discuss concerns, and then we've also done two family surveys. And we're getting, it was so cool to, you know, open it up and, and your heart kind of gets a little excited when you see, you know, over 100 responses, and you're thinking, oh, my goodness, I mean, I thought we were getting down there. And then just to start paring through those 100 responses and to have so many that were positive, and so then pretty soon you lop off those and, and you get down to the ones that you're working on. And we continued to work the last few weeks, but like Joe said, it's really getting to the spot where it's, it's a lot slower of people having concerns and, but yet that doesn't mean that we don't still want to hear them. We want to hear them and figure out how to keep and continuously improve them.
We did start our, our surveys today, or our attendance this week, so the bus drivers may be taking a little bit longer to drop the kids off or pick them up, but it's maybe a minute or two. But we're within 200 kids in our database versus yours now, so we're very, very close to knowing who's really riding and who's really not riding, which is a big deal to find out. But I have to echo what Eric said, when we, when we clip those out of the, out of the surveys and put them on our pop machine about, boy, we really like our bus driver Doug, he does this, and the bus driver, they, they love that stuff, you know, because in our world, and I suppose the world in general, most people are calling to complain, and not very often do I get to say, hey, look at this, this was somebody compliment on your driving. It's generally, hey, the bus was going so fast, or the bus went on two wheels, or all that kind of stuff. And so if you, I know people.
That was the magic school bus on Saturday morning.
But the, the positive ones, and I know it was like 104, but I don't remember how many positive ones, but our pop machine was filled out, and we clipped them out, laminated them, and it's for everybody to see, it's, it's cool. I appreciate anybody that took the time to fill those out.
Yeah, we just opened it up for questions right now in hopes that if we can't answer it, I know Jamie sat with us too and had some good feedback for us to get to this point. We also hope that, you know, the process that we continue to open doors for people to be problem solvers and come to us with their concerns, and that's what we're really trying to instill today.
I have a question. Could you discuss how things are working with our Montessori school here in town? Because they, you know, there was some discussion early on about their times not matching ours and that sort of thing. How is, how is that working out? Are we having complaints from the Montessori folks?
Montessori gets paired up with our nature base and our Eastview, so the ride times for those people that have shuttles are longer. When Eric and I met with them this summer, there were options to ride on high school times or the elementary times, and I did email back and forth with a school board member a little bit there, saying that, you know, here are some choices for you, and once again, they're choices, but they cost everybody money. So if all of a sudden, they're going to have their kids in school longer, they have to pay people on that end longer. If they have longer rides that match what we do, then they pay less. And it's not all about pay all the time, but that's, that's a big one on, on that part of it. So yes, ideally, if they took the elementary start time and the high school dismissal time, they would have short, short. But you could do the same thing, and if we could afford single routes, we'd have short, short, but it just doesn't work that way.
Any discussion or questions from the board?
Are the two challenge areas our longest routes that you referenced in the previous slide?
Those are the two that we're going to fix on Thursday.
Yeah. And then are those literally the only ones that we're working on, that we need to work on?
Those are the only ones that I, that I have, that I have to fix right now, that people are still wanting help or improvement. And once again, the lady called this morning or emailed this morning, we got her taken care of by this afternoon. If they, if somebody has something, you got to let us know now, because we're right there, and I don't want people to give up. We're doing the attendance and finding out, okay, there's kids riding now that weren't riding at the beginning of the year because maybe the routes are better now and they're not quite as long. So, yeah.
And that's what I was going to say too, is that I think if I had to, you know, you look back and you see everything that we've done over the last couple of years, if I was going to make any changes or, or give somebody advice on what to do if they were going to change school start times, I'd do a, a transportation survey before we start, so that people have the opportunity to say how it's working, how long they felt their morning ride, their afternoon ride. You could gather some numbers compared to the numbers of the true data, and then you could capture their feelings after that. So, you know, we're now, the baseline, we're not hearing from, you know, a lot of the people because they, they have, you know, either the same or better times and/or, you know, we are hearing from some, and we're trying to fix those as they come up. So, and we do have, I mean, it was busy, there's no doubt, for the first couple of months of school. But I think, you know, between the two of us, we got, you know, to everybody that was emailing us and we're able to give them customer service and, you know, keep them going with communication while we tried to fix it. I mean, we had great communication from Joe to, you know, the city and this, the highway department, and they helped tweak a few things during road construction. We just had a really community effort, quality community effort. There's still some things like, you know, that pop up with transportation that we'll have to look at, and so even besides this, there, there's going to be things that come up, but when you make phone calls to other companies or other communities or other districts, they're also going to have those same challenges, and so it's just always continuing, you know, problem solving and, and making sure you have a product that you're proud of. And I, right now, I couldn't be more proud of, you know, being able to stand in front of you today and, and be at a spot where we've been at for the first, you know, or the last few years with Eastview being open. But hands off to a company that's willing to meet every morning and, and, you know, try to figure this out, answer tough emails together, because people deserve us to answer those tough emails, and they deserve the transportation that they had last year, and so. And so.
Thank you both for working hard to tackle the problems we were having a few, but we asked you to get it done by the end of the year. And here we are, middle of November, and we're in good shape. So thank you both.
How many are on the bus for over an hour? Is it five students, 50 students?
I can, yeah, so if you look at that, those, if so, if we look at the same data that we had for the last seven years and we compare it to what we have right now, it would be around 80 students that still have in that, that hour to hour 24 with their community ride. In that, in that range, there would still be about 80 people in the morning, 80 people in the night, and they, they could be different people.
Joe, can you tell us how many people we're transporting with the Montessori school, roughly?
We have 4,100 in our database. Once again, that's mom dad stops, that's Montessori, that's Right Choice, Votech, all that kind of stuff. So.
Oh, I see. It's hard to tease it out.
Hard to get, because sometimes I go to dad's house two days a week and I go to mom's house three days a week, but it's student ID, 12345M and 12345M, M.D., that's all mom dad. And that's how we sometimes get more students listed than you guys do, because we have to have the Montessori in there, because you guys don't have them in your database. So that's, I think we're always going to be in that couple hundred-ish different, but at least we know why right now.
And I could call the director at Swan River and get that number. I'm sure they would have that as part of their database. And we did realize that, you know, our data, we're working on constantly to clean up right now, because we, things were just working. And, I mean, it was, you know, Jamie recognizing like, what, how come that data is not matching and at a meeting? And, and so then, you know, we started digging in and looking at it, and we've had practices that we haven't been implementing. So making sure that when we have a student who leaves, making sure that we have, you know, offboarding process for students. So while it's important for staff, it's also important for students and making sure that transportation is part of that offboarding, so that they don't stay on that. We had lots of students who were on the census, so I'm a two-year-old and I'm on, in our database, right? Because we have to track them for other things, but that database shouldn't be going to transportation. So there's a lot of, there was a lot of data, if you remember, right? I think Joe said like about an eight thou, he's, we got them down to 4,000 now. It might have been about an $8,000 data point at the first presentation, because both of us, we didn't have to know that stuff before, because they were just working, they knew the community very well, they knew the trends, and transportation was working. And now we had to dive in to make sure that it works now with its new parameters.
Joe, I want to thank you for coming and thank you for providing us with this update. I'm hoping that you'll be here maybe again at the end of the year as we process through the changes and, and monitor how things are going with the new school start times. I think it'd be beneficial to have an end of the year recap on that sort of tool, so.
Whenever you guys want.
Yeah, I can tell you, though there is challenges, you know, like any type of change that you encounter, a lot more good has come out of this, that we've been able to identify gaps, that we've been able to close those gaps. And I, I mean, I think we're going to be so much better and stronger because of it, even next year. They're already talking about routes and how they're going to look at it to even improve things even more next year. It's, it's pretty exciting.
And in January 2025, with the help of Devin Moore and Jason Borgstrom, we will have texting to be able to text buses and make sure, or text families, so that they know if their child's going to be late, or if there's a bus that, you know, broke down, or, you know, we have some kind of quick communication that we need to get out there. We've been using School Messenger and things like that. And I know everybody loves reading my long emails, I guess texting might work a little bit better.
Yeah, I think that's huge.
I just want to commend you too, because you, as a bus company, you could easily said, this is the way, this is, this is the way our routes are set up, this is, that's just the way life, that's how we're going to do it. And you guys didn't do that. You jumped into it right away. You immediately solved, and you got to.
You jumped into it as a team and then you took care of it, and that's awesome.
Any other comments, questions, anything from the students? You guys ride buses?
Magic bus, you've never been on a magic bus? Not bad, is it? Good air conditioning, light, it's kind of fun. Eric.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, it's, we won't take it personal. And our students have another activity that they need to go to this evening, so thank you for coming for the part of the, appreciate it.
Yeah, they didn't even have to be here tonight. This was the one that was, this was like above and beyond, just because they missed us, is what we heard.
They'd like you to take a picture for them at the end of the meeting and text it to them, they need it for their class.
Okay.
We didn't have time before.
Casey's got your number?
Yeah. Guys can work that out. So moving back to the agenda, oh geez, what's here? We're going to go on to number seven, teaching and learning. We have Cindy Fasching, who's going to join us for A and B on our agenda tonight. She's going to discuss middle school health curriculum supplemental material that we've been working on for several weeks, and then also the Minnesota Arts Education Grant. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Gavin, could you open that link, please? So first thing up is middle school health update. And so I'm here tonight to request approval that we could use new texts for middle school seventh and eighth grade health curriculum. The texts are published by Goodheart Wilcox, and they're called Essential Health Skills for Middle School. And then there's a supplement that goes with that for human development and relationships. So why do we need an update to our health curriculum? So right now, we've got some very new health teachers in our middle school, and currently we're using a teacher-developed curriculum that's got supplemental resources that were curated by the teacher. And that's very difficult for a new teacher to utilize. And so the decision was made that they need a lot of assistance with that, and we want to look for a very high-quality health curriculum. It comes in a bundled resource that's got structured lessons, it's got presentations that are pre-made, it's got assessments that are pre-made, and student activities that are already vetted and curated by the publisher, so that we can avoid some of the miscellaneous pulling in supplemental resources that need to be approved every time they're pulled in. So we really want to streamline that. We want to also make sure that it aligns with our high school curriculum, which is the same publisher, same, same materials. So when students go from grades seven, eight, and then up to 10, they'll have a very well-aligned curriculum that gets deeper into 10th grade, but it's very, very appropriate for seventh and eighth grade. So the recommendation that I'd like to make is that we adopt this new curriculum immediately, so that these teachers can have the resources that they need to help our students and teach to the best of their ability. Do you want to scroll up a little bit, Gavin? So the plan for parent communication, down, yeah, down, I'm sorry. There is a link there that we're going to send a letter home following the board approval. So we'll send that home tomorrow. And the letter just basically looks pretty much like what you're looking at here. It commits to our parent communication, so we'll be sending out a letter to all students, all families of seventh and eighth grade students, notifying them of new curriculum. We'll also be asking the teachers to be sure and post everything all year long on their school log page for people to preview whenever they, the new units are coming up. And then they'll also update the curriculum map. Also, the links that you see, the first one is, it's a folder that has all of the presentations for every unit that the students will go through throughout seventh and eighth grade. So parents could go through and they can look at through every single slideshow that their child might see. And if there's something in there that they don't agree with, they could opt their child out of lessons if they choose. The second link that they'll get is a statement of evidence that comes from the publisher, and it talks about the people who wrote the text and what their biographies are and what their expertise is, along with all of the evidence-based resources that were used to publish this curriculum, along with all the experts that they, that they resourced in order to write it. So those are the three things that, or the, oh, sorry, the last one is the correlation between the national health standards, which Minnesota asks that we follow the national health standards, and then this curriculum. So it specifically outlines everything in there and all of the standards, and then it lines it up to our curriculum, so you can see what students are learning. So it's very, very transparent for parents. That'll be, I'll put this on our website as well, for people to be able to look at. And then also, as always, if families decide they want to opt their child out of something, there is an opt-out form there that parents can print out and send back to their health teacher, if that's what they choose to do. If families also want to come in and actually preview hard copies of the curriculum itself, they can come in and do that, and we'll provide those at any time. And then at the bottom is just an outline of all of the units of instruction for our health, our new health curriculum. I'm very excited about it. I think it's really, really well-written, it's 2025, it's current, it's very appropriate for seventh and eighth grade. I would even go so far as to say it's, it's quite conservative, but I like that for seventh and eighth grade. And then when they get to 10th grade, there's a little more meat, more meat to it, so. So that's my presentation on the health curriculum, and I'm asking that I receive the support of the school board to be able to implement that.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board? The board members did receive the hard copies of these. We had the opportunity to ask questions of you at our last work session. My understanding is there was also a small focus group of parents at some point recently that looked through these and basically were pretty happy with the curriculum as well.
Yeah, and we'll bring it to the curriculum advisory committee or the district advisory committee that's coming up. And then we also want to specifically invite parents from different grade levels to come in and take a closer look.
And financially, this is a really good deal for us, because we already purchased the curriculum. This is just a supplemental, so it's a very small expenditure for the district. So any, any questions, anything further for discussion on this? Members, we have in front of us a recommendation to approve the middle school health curriculum supplemental material as presented.
It's all moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Rude. All those in favor of approving the middle school health curriculum supplemental material, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the motion passes 6-0. Congratulations, Cindy.
Thank you.
And Cindy's going to remain at the podium, and she's going to discuss the Minnesota Arts Education Grant.
If I could, I'm just going to kick this one off. We didn't have our parentheses there tonight. I think it'll be presentation mode. That gives Cindy a little bit of time to go back and work with the middle school, just to make sure that they're all in awareness. But she filled this out with the teachers, and this is a part of an 18-month study that Jersey Barth was part of with our music program, and just trying to support our program that was having some high class sizes. And so we tried to problem solve last year, and I tried to get volunteers in the classroom, but I was unable to, even after some community-wide communication. And so this was an effort from that committee, a carryover from that committee, to try find a grant, to find some knowledgeable folks to be able to push in, but it is for some paid support into the class. So I'll let her talk about it and present it, but then we'll have the action of acceptance of the grant at the December 2 meeting.
All right, thank you. So the Minnesota Arts Education Association met on last Thursday in their board meeting. They accepted our grant, and so we will be receiving a grant if we choose to accept that. And so I got this notice, so I just cut and pasted exactly what I received from them, that they were excited to approve our arts education grant. So as Mr. Olson said, I wrote this grant in combination with three of the music teachers, Jen Mackey, David Herdan, and Michelle Shetler Stein. And so together, we put our heads together in what would we like to see at the middle school with this grant in order to make some improvements. And as Mr. Olson said, the courses, the size of the classes are large, and there's, there's been an inability for those teachers to give specific music instructions when they have such a large group. So they have to teach to the whole group. And so we were looking for a way to be able to offset that and provide some additional instruction. On the next slide, we came up with the Monticello Middle School Master Classes. And so the goal for this grant is to provide instrumental music students access to master teachers who will come into our schools during the school day and work, pull the students out of their band or orchestra class by instrument. So we'll just pull the violinists, or we'll just pull the people playing clarinet, and we'll go into a separate room and we'll have specific instruction on that instrument, and then they'll go back into the classroom. So this will provide that, that instruction or those lessons that we haven't been able to provide for a while. But it'll happen instead of pulling kids out from different periods of the day, it'll happen during their music class. So there's no effect on kids missing any other classes, it's built into their schedule. So that's the idea of the master classes. And so we were awarded $35,000. So what that would pay for is five master teachers. And so the vision is retired teachers in our Monticello community or surrounding communities that we could pull into our schools to help us with this. They would be paid $200 a day for 35 approximately days each, spread out between January 1st to December 20, or December 31st of next year. So we're hoping to spend most of it this school year, but if we have money left, we're going to extend it into the following school year. So students would get this about every other day when they come to music class. And so we're very excited about the possibility of having master classes in, at the middle school level. It'll set them up for success when they get up into the high school. And this is something that we would hope we could apply for year to year. Many schools get grants year to year, and they sustain programming through this funding source, so. We're excited about this. Again, like Mr. Olson said, I want to meet with the middle school and really work out the details and make sure that it's feasible for them. Any questions?
My understanding is this will bring back what we used to call lessons. So that unfortunately, I don't know how many years it's been since we've had those, four or five?
Five?
Maybe. That was one area that I know parents were concerned about too, that the students weren't having any private lessons, what we call private lessons anymore. But one of the flip side of that was the students were being pulled out of other classes. All the clarinets would have lessons together, all the flutes or that sort of thing. So I think one of the benefits to this new structure is they're not going to be pulled out of any core classes for that, and yet we're bringing back some of the individual lessons and individual instruction on their instrument, which is really, really difficult for the kids to pick up, I think, without some guidance.
And there's a shortage of people that you can go out and get lessons from out into the community, so to bring them in to work with, you know, five to 10 students at a time, instead of five to 10 students having to go out and find private instruction, private lessons.
And it's very costly for the parents.
And it's very expensive. And with our students with their busy schedules, this is also a benefit to all students who really don't have the time to go out and get those lessons. So I think it's exciting all the way around, it's a break even, it doesn't cost us anything. So we'll see.
Thank you for putting in for the grants.
We applied last March, it took them a long time to make a decision.
Cindy puts on the grant writing hat, and that's not your primary job, of course, but it's so important that we chase after some of these sources of funding, so that we can provide or bring back things that we used to have, that we just don't have the opportunity to do otherwise, so. Any other board members have any questions or discussion for Cindy on the Minnesota Arts Education Grant?
Thank you for doing it.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate that.
And to Jen Mackey and the other two music teachers for, for tending the grant, writing the grant, doing all the, if it has to be done.
Couple of questions. It is exciting, thank you for doing it. Do we understand that the $35,000 needs to be, needs to be spent during 2025? That's how it's written?
Yep.
And will the master teachers that are coming in be here for the full day for that $200, or is that for a couple of hours of their time?
The most part, it'll be the whole day, yes.
And do you anticipate that being a challenge, finding those people?
Yes, I do anticipate that. But we are looking as far as Minneapolis-St. Paul. So these are people, again, who are retired, but they want to come up to Monticello for one or two days a week. It's not a full-time job to them, so it's a part-time job on the side. And so I think we'll be able to find those people. There aren't a lot of things like this happening in other schools, and so they'll see this as an opportunity, I think.
Do you have to use five different people?
No, we don't have to use, so if we had three people and they came more often, that would be great, they just have to have expertise in those instruments that they're working with.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question too, and I didn't hear the answer to it, maybe you did cover it, but. But why five years ago did we cut lessons?
So we went to an every-other-day schedule instead of an everyday music and everyday fayed, and they cut back a period of the day. And so it just doesn't fit within the schedule anymore. And for students to be pulled out of course, they'd have to be pulled out of different classes in order to do that. And so that's a difficulty for most students.
So think of it like if I was a music teacher back in the old way. My six-hour, I might be teaching lessons for the whole hour. So as the budget has been trimmed, that means that you're not like being efficient if you're having four kids receive a lesson under one full-time equivalent. And so we knew that we wanted to do something like this, and hence Kathy pushed for a steering committee. So we worked 18 months to try and find ways that we could be efficient and effective with our budget, but also make sure that we offer the instruction that our kids need, that you guys have all picked up because a lot of you have students in music. So that's awesome. And so I think this is just a way that, to be honest, I'm going to use it for marketing. This is going to be on our flyer. Because having lessons is important to people who are musicians and who want to learn a craft and be good at it. It's just like if you want to be good at baseball and hitting, you're going to get some instruction on the side. You're going to get some instruction, extra instruction from multiple coaches on the field. And so it's the same thing, and now we're able to apply this. And whether it's for a year or not, but I will be using it for marketing. It's going to be a good tool.
This also puts us on par with some of the larger districts in the Twin Cities that offer these types of music experiences for their students. And this is, music is something that our district has a deep history in. And so when we look to those issues with districts down in the Twin Cities that have foundations and things that are supporting their arts programs, they're able to provide things that some of these smaller schools are not. And this is very exciting that there's a grant opportunity out there for us to bring back something like this for our students. If you imagine being a sixth grader and having someone hand you an instrument, and you sit in the class and that's how you learn, you know, that's almost impossible. None of us could learn in that environment effectively, or, you know. So if we want them to stick with it and love their instrument and make this a part of their education, then I think this is an important area. So thank you, Cindy, for the time that you put into this.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I do have one follow-up question, I guess, after those comments. In the event that we can't find the instructors, use the full grant, and you expand the usage of the grant into other arts areas?
No, that's not the way the grant is written. They wouldn't allow that. We would just have to only use what we can.
Okay.
Give the rest back. Because I think they do award us 90%, upfront. I think it is 90% or 95%.
Okay.
When will the advertising begin to fill those positions, do you think?
It sounds like we have. Sounds like we have a good interest right now. So like I said, we forgot to put the action item here. And it allows Cindy a little bit more time. We just were awarded it Friday, so she hasn't had a lot of time to be able to get to the appropriate people in the middle school. So it'd be nice for her to be able to do that. We'll approve it December 2nd. But I think we could start advertising for them right now, and then.
And I think they have some names on their lists already.
Sure.
They're well-connected to people in the music industry.
Those folks tend to be pretty passionate, too.
They do.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, thanks.
All right, moving on to item number eight on our agenda, safe and healthy culture. We have Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Services, going to give us an enrollment projections, review that, and go through some financial information in her cover sheet. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you. All right, so like Kathy mentioned, we have our enrollment projections for next year. And throughout this, we'll look at last year's projection, how that came about, some trends that came through the '25-'26 already enrollment projection, and kind of what is the result of it. So just to look back since I started, 2012, our enrollment has seen some small increases, some small decreases, but just has been hovering around that 4,100 population for students for us. But just a sneak peek in where we're heading, I am projecting next year to be under 4,000 for the first time, 3,0996. So like I said, this is just a five-year look back. We've seen some small increases and small decreases. So in 2021, going into COVID, we saw kind of that first big drop, and then another big drop going into this year. For our residents, we've seen some similar trends, but overall, you know, still around that 4,000 mark. And then of the residents that live within our borders, about just over 80% attend our school. So almost 20% are going elsewhere that live within our borders. And when you look at last year, where are students coming from? Where are they going? We gain the most from Big Lake, and we lose the most from St. Michael-Albertville. And then on the side, I had other kind of areas where we lose to Swan River, Montessori, our co-op, Wright Technical, Kaleidoscope Spectrum, Jane Goodall. So transition in Houston is online. So there are other areas that we lose students to. And then the next slide has the trend over the last 10 years. And so you can see that we are an enrollment loser overall. So now we've kind of hit that 200 net of enrollment loss to kids going out. And we also lose kids during the year. So looking at October 1 count versus kind of that third week in May, or the last day for seniors, we see a lot of students that kind of either graduate early or they're moving on, or I don't know where they're going, but they're not finishing the year with us. And then we have a similar trend over the last 10 years. About three of those 10 years, we did gain during the year, but a lot of that's in the elementary schools. But we're losing them in the secondaries. So other things I look at are the building permits for the city. And this is the single-family detached building permits, so not the townhomes. Those are the attached building permits. So not a lot of building activity with that. We do have some apartment buildings and townhomes also, but this is just looking at the family homes. And the Wright County population is increasing, but it's increasing in other cities versus kind of where we're at. So looking at the enrollment projection into this year, how did that pan out? And so we did see some decreases in all kind of grade sections. Not one area was kind of missed. It was all grades. This graph just shows by grade. There's not a lot you can see, but who didn't show up. But kindergarten and seniors are some of the higher ones. So going on to the enrollment projection for this year, there are sets of data that you can look at. You can look at your October 1 enrollment. You can look at your end-of-year ADMs, which we wouldn't want to do because we lose kids. We want to staff when we have the most kids in our building. Or you can look at district data. And I've used district data in the past mainly because with our co-op program, students tend to float between MONI and co-op. But now that we have our Level 4 being more off-site, kind of going, transitioning probably to the October 1 trends, but with a little bit of district data because we do have kids, for example, at Pinewood, that kind of float back and forth between MONI programs and co-op programs. So first, we'll look at kindergarten projection methods. You can hold them constant. You can look at a linear progression. You can look at average county births, or again, district data as well. And so this is just a table that shows the Wright County births versus the kindergartners that show up. So we've been, the last couple of years, just over 14%, but we have seen percents in the 16 and 17%. So looking at a four-year average, about 15.4% kind of projects what our kindergartners might be for the following year. And so overall, I mean, it's a positive sign. Our Wright County births are increasing. As a whole state of Minnesota, I think births were declining. So it's a positive for us.
May I ask a question? So about 2,500 to 3,000 residents live on the Sherburne County side of our district. Does any of these projections take that slice into account? I know it would be difficult to shave them off of the whole Sherburne County, but are we missing any, do you think, from the Sherburne County side?
I don't think so, because I mean, if they're, they might live in Sherburne County, and they might have crossed the river to have their babies there. So it's just looking at the births. Well, to your point, it probably could. They might be registered under Sherburne County versus Wright County.
Just want to get every, capture every student that we can.
And so diving into the projection method a little bit, looked at just the average county births, the low, medium, and high. And so I looked at the average, the medium Wright County births, and using that for our kindergarten projection method. After that, you have the rest of the projection to do. There is just a year average spanning from years two to seven, or a weighted year average using years two through seven. So I looked at weighted years just to look at the more current years to use as data. I had three-year, four-year, five-year, and six-year weighted average. There's not a lot of variation between the four methods. 40, 46, 52 is the difference between the low and the high end. So not a lot of variations between the projections. But in the end, I use kind of mid to higher projection, hoping that some of those apartments or kind of townhomes will shift the families moving into the area. But still, the projection is just under 4,000 at 3,0996, a decrease from this year of 28 students. And this includes our online students, but it doesn't include our students that are in the co-op setting, Level 4 programs.
Why do you leave them out?
Because they are staffed separately with the co-op. We use our staffing ratios just with Monticello kids. So diving into the five-year projection, you can see the enrollment projection is dipping down a little bit. And this is where you see the reason why. This is looking at our seniors leaving and the kindergartner classes that are replacing it. So we have larger seniors classes leaving and smaller kindergarten classes replacing them. So that's why you'll see a decline in enrollment. This is looking at the enrollment projections by grade groupings. And that helps us with our staffing ratios. So we're within our building capacities. We have room to grow when they come. And this is looking at the kindergartner projections in the next five years. So we will hopefully see an uptick because of the higher Wright County births in the area. Our grades one through five dipping down a little bit because of the lower kindergartner classes coming in. Grades six through eight, kind of almost level, going up a little bit, but then dropping down again. Kindergartners coming in. And then grades nine through 12. So this year that we're in is the highest year that they'll have the most students in their building, and then it'll slowly taper off a little bit. This is the grade projection, or the enrollment projection by grade. So we can see what's happening there. And you'll notice between fifth and sixth grade, we do tend to jump a little bit because we tend to have a history of having more kids from Swan River join us in grade six. This is a graph that just shows the enrollment change by grade. So you can see where we're increasing and decreasing. But at the end of the day, like I said, 3,996, but I hope I'm wrong, in a good way. Any questions?
I'm always impressed with how accurate you are.
Well, this year I wasn't, as you can see by the slide, but.
Any questions for Tina about enrollment projections? Discussion by the board? I'll wait for Mark to come back in case he has any questions. Any questions, Mark, for enrollment projections? Thank you, Tina, appreciate your time today. Moving on to item B, we have Terry Woodworth, our Director of Buildings and Grounds with us this evening to talk about a recommendation for a partnership with a facility condition assessment. Welcome, Terry.
Thank you, thank you. So yes, Buildings and Grounds Committee recommends partnering with Kraus Anderson to conduct a comprehensive facility condition assessment across all the schools in the school district. The assessment will provide a detailed understanding of the current facility conditions and identify critical areas for improvement, supporting the district's commitment to safe, sustainable, and high-functioning learning environments. The summary of key recommendations. The issues, of course, are the district facilities are aging and in need of a thorough evaluation to identify existing issues, prioritize maintenance, and plan for future improvements. A lack of comprehensive data makes it challenging to allocate resources effectively. Proposed solution, of course, engage Kraus Anderson to conduct this assessment that will evaluate each school's infrastructure, identify deficiencies, and provide recommendations on maintenance, repairs, and upgrades. Expected outcomes, the assessment will enable the district to make informed decisions regarding facility investments, prioritize projects based on urgency and impact on students and staff, develop a proactive maintenance strategy, and extend the lifespan and reduce future costs. Resources needed, the project will require a budget allocation of $56,800. Implementation timeline, phase one, of course, is secure the board approval. Phase two, begin assessment. That will be determined after, but shortly after, with estimated completion of eight to 12 weeks. And of course, phase three, present the findings to the board and develop an action plan based on recommendations shortly after assessment has been completed. And again, budget considerations, estimated cost, $56,800 to have Kraus conduct this facility assessment for us. And again, the funding source for this, we will use LTFM funds to pay for this assessment. There's no impact on the general fund. Stakeholder impacts, teachers and staff will benefit from improved facility conditions that support productive productivity and safety. Students and families, this proactive approach ensures that facilities remain conducive to learning and are well-maintained. Community demonstrates the district's commitment to transparency, safety, and responsible resource management. Measurable outcomes and successful criteria. Again, completion of the assessment. It will deliver, Kraus Anderson will deliver a comprehensive report with an agreed-upon timeline. Identification of prioritized projects. Report includes a prioritized list of maintenance and upgrade recommendations with estimated costs. Informed decision-making, the district utilizes findings to make data-driven investment decisions in upcoming budgets. Again, conclusion and next step. The committee strongly recommends moving forward with Kraus Anderson's facility condition assessment. This investment will provide the district with crucial insight to maintaining and improving its schools' facilities effectively. And again, our immediate next step, approve the committee's recommendation and initiate agreement with Kraus, so.
Thank you, Terry. I want to add to your commentary here that this is not the first time the board has heard this presentation. We've been working with facilities, Building and Grounds Committee for a number of months, evaluated three different companies to provide this that had wildly different costs attached to them. And so this is also not the first time the board has had this. And so this is also not the first time the board has had this information as well. So I just want to make that clear to anyone watching, that this is not the first time we've, we've had this information before us. I want to ask Casey Root, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Say what's up.
Casey and I both sit on the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
So we've been going, what did it start? This started in, I think, July of last year.
About a year ago, yeah.
Looking at this, and really what, what the goal is, is to make sure that we're spending the money on the facilities wisely, so we're not just chasing the wrong things. We're not spending money repairing the wrong things that don't need to be repaired. And then we have a nice plan for, for Building and Grounds to follow on there. And it also helps with the capital investments as well. So it's, it's a long-term planning tool is really what it's for. So it's not a one-time thing, and then we just forget about it. So we own the data, we'll have the data, we'll be able to update everything as we move forward, so...
And this will help us with planning out 10, 15, 20 years, looking at every aspect of our district, from our space utilization in the classrooms, to the roofs, to the boilers, to the carpet. I mean, every aspect of our Buildings and Grounds will be tracked and documented, and this is really something that we can pass on to future boards many years down the road. So any questions?
Another analogy would be, as you were to purchase a home, you have a home inspection.
Yep.
Here's everything that's wrong with the house, here's everything that needs to be updated with the building, here's everything behind the, you know, back rooms that you don't see if you just walk through the building. But part of it too is having this information available to the public after the reports, they can see, here's the critical items that need to be updated, here's why. So it's just more clarity as to where we're spending our money and why we're spending it and what needs to be updated, so...
Yeah, I think that was a key part of the, they call the dashboard pages, that it, it will give you some indication as to, is this a red, a yellow, or a green item, you know? So that, as you said, we're not just chasing the squeaky wheel or waiting for something to break, and then, you know, repairing it and finding out it would have been better to replace it with a more modern.
Right, and it's not just a report that adds up to a file like cabinet either, so...
It's useful on a day-to-day basis.
It will be updated over time, so...
Anybody else comments, questions for Terry from the board?
First of all, thank you to the committee for all your work on this for a long time. I think it's a difficult sell to the board when we're looking at some budgetary challenges coming up. But I think going back through the tennis court experience and all the different options that were there, and the amount of money that it would cost to repair the tennis courts, and then hearing about the buckets in the schools with the roof leaks, and imagining how much money we could spend repairing those things, and really just putting Band-Aids around the district, this seems to be a good investment to make sure that we're smart about where we spend our money, and really the order of how we do things, because you can, you could probably spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on something, and then a year later go, oh, shoot, now we have to redo that because there's something in between point A and point C that needs to get repaired. So thank you again, and I do see the wisdom in the investment.
Mark, I also want to piggyback on that. I just found out recently that we use LTFM funds to fix our buildings. And there is a situation that is evolving across the state affecting other districts where, just like us, we have a cap on how much we can spend to fix certain things. That's now beginning to affect those districts' ability to get insurance on their buildings. So having a tool like this that would be able to give us some guidance as opposed to the squeaky wheel or the broken item method of fixing things, I think makes a whole lot of sense, until we get things like that LTFM cap lifted by the legislature. So, I mean, I was, I was astonished when I, when I heard that. It was like the legislature tied our hands on the one hand, and then they said you can't have insurance on the other because you didn't fix your buildings properly. So, so I think these are really important tools, that these are modernizing tools rather than having a ledger or having institutional knowledge where you have someone says, yeah, I remember when they put that boiler in, you know? I think it gives us really objective information to have, for planning into the future. Do you have anything you wanted to add, Brittany? Okay, board members, we have before us a recommendation from the Facility Building and Grounds Committee and the Director of Buildings and Grounds to approve Kraus Anderson at a rate of $56,000, and what was the change on that? Eight hundred?
Yep.
To conduct and provide us with an ongoing product for facility condition assessment. All those in favor of approving Kraus Anderson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. Need a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. We had too much discussion there. All those in favor of approving Kraus Anderson as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. And Kraus Anderson is approved, 6-0. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Next, we have Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources, going to discuss policies, but first he's going to go over the Principal-Master Agreement with us and the tentative agreement. And that is an action item. Welcome, Mr. Daniker.
Chair Zebarth, members of the board. So as Chair Zebarth mentioned, I have two agenda items back to back here. The first one is, it's always exciting when we can come to a tentative agreement with our, our employees. And so in this case, it is the Principals Association. We came to a tentative agreement on about a week ago, Wednesday, November 13th. Because they are such a small group, they were able to turn around pretty quickly and ratify that on Friday, November 15th. And so we were able to bring it to the board tonight for, for approval. I'll just go through the, the top-line items here. Thank you, Gavin. So if you scroll up a little bit, Gavin. So in year one, the Schedule A salary, Schedule, so two things here. So first, we, one of the priorities, we had mutually shared priority in negotiations was to establish a step schedule for the Principals. In the previous contract, the salaries were spelled out by name within that contract. And there's pluses and minuses to that, but I think more minuses generally. And so one of the things is that we're now able to adequately, if we have an opening in the future, we're able to adequately and efficiently post what the range is right away. And we also maintain the district's right to assign a new hire at any of those steps. So that was, that was beneficial. And then, of course, the Principals appreciate having a tiered step, so there's movement through the first couple of years of employment as well. So in terms of the salary schedule improvement, once we established that, the Principals, they wanted to front-load their contract as much as possible, and so the district was open to that. Doesn't change anything in terms of the backend dollars that we were willing to put forward, but the Principals requested 5.58 on all cells in year one. And so then, fast-forwarding to year two, that number is substantially lower. It's a 0.90 on all cells in year two. So again, we didn't, the district's negotiating team didn't waver in terms of what our budgetary limitations as we had established were, and the Principals worked within that to structure their deal as they saw fit. In terms of language items, just kind of scrolling through here, there was four clarifications. One was a missed line from the last settlement regarding the HSA contribution by the district, rather important line. We made sure we got that back in there. We also clarified the duty years for 10 and 11-month Principals. 10-month Principal is 220 duty days, and 11-month is 240 duty days. A 12-month therefore would be 260 duty days as well. We clarified language regarding spousal enrollment and group health insurance. There was just some clunky language in there, especially around the retiree health benefit that is within the principal contract. And then we also clarified that there's no cap on Principals' ability to purchase additional term life insurance. There was a cap of $100,000 that they could purchase with their own money as a, as a cap on that life insurance value, and there's really no reason to have that in there, so we agreed to strike through that. In terms of expenses not covered by insurance, we, the Principals do have an opportunity to have $500 reimbursed to them for expenses not covered by insurance. It was mutually beneficial to add that to the base of Schedule B, which is year two of the agreement. It frees up, alleviates some district office time and duties with regarding processing those reimbursements and receipts and things of that nature. And then it just puts, most Principals are using this on its entirety every year, so it just puts it on the base, and we move forward with our lives. Flex time, the Principals have a MOA regarding some of their flex time currently in their contract. They don't use it all that much, and they talked about the pros and cons of those days in general, but they, for now, they elected to keep that in there, and we were okay with that. Holidays, we added Juneteenth as a holiday, much as we have for all year-round workers. And then in terms of language cleanup, we adjusted the years, of course, throughout. We cleaned up gender references throughout. The most egregious gender reference, for instance, in, across many different contracts, has been a reference to the superintendent as a he or a him. So just making sure that those things are not in the contract moving forward. And then interestingly, in this one, the school district was, is defined in the first couple of articles, but then there was about four or five different versions of how the school district was referred to with, throughout the contract, so we just cleaned that up in, in the last steps as well. Principal dues, the Principals are required, all administrators who hold a license through Pelsby are required to pay an annual payment to the Board of School Administrators. Chair Zebarth, you would love to look into this one, and I'm sure it would infuriate you to no end about what this is and why folks have to pay it on top of their fees for their licenses as well. But this, the district, most districts do pay this for their administrators. It's a nominal $100 fee annually, and so we have been doing that, but it wasn't in the contract, so we added language to that extent. Professional development, this was one of the bigger changes within the contract. The Principals, we have five Principals right now who are completing the University of Minnesota's highly-recognized and well-sought-out Principals Academy, and they requested a stipend for completion of that program. It is a significant professional development opportunity. And so what we did was we structured it similar to the existing contract language with regard to national conventions. And so the Principals previously have had the opportunity to attend a national convention at district expense once every two years. And in order to contain costs on both measures, we moved that out from one every two years to one every three years. And then completion of the University of Minnesota Principals Academy essentially functions as if it was a national convention. So there is a stipend attached to it, but then you are ineligible to attend a national convention for a period of three as well. So trying to contain some costs in there as well. Salary schedule, we mentioned that we added a salary schedule to this contract. This will also allow us to post the contract publicly without potentially violating anybody's individual privacy, because there will be no individual names within the contract, so that's nice. And as I mentioned, we did add language regarding initial placement and salary schedule, which the district maintains that authority. And then finally, vacation. The Principals had bargained for two additional vacation days in this contract. We're still well within the range of competing districts in terms of vacation days for a 12-month Principal, so this moved it from 22 to 24 days, and that is prorated for 10 and 11-month Principals appropriately. And then finally, we do have one Principal who was hired as a 11-and-a-half-month Principal through a special arrangement, and part of that arrangement placed some stipulations on that individual's use of vacation time. And frankly, it wouldn't pass muster if it was challenged, and so we, we waived that provision that was in that person's initial hire contract. So final, in total, the total package value over two years is 8.77 MSBA, so right almost exactly in line with where our teachers settled. They settled at 8.64. I'll entertain any questions that the board might have regarding Principals' agreement.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, we have before us the Principal-Master Agreement, and the summary is presented by Mr. Daniker, Director of Human Resources. Do we have a motion?
Still moved or seconded?
Motion presented by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of approving the Principal-Master Agreement as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Principals' Master Agreement passes 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Daniker.
All right. Next up on the agenda this evening is our second reading of board policies. First reading was two weeks ago for these six policies. The first of these is Policy Number 215, Student Representative on the School Board. The purpose of this policy is to foster an environment whereby students may freely express their views and listen to and evaluate the opinions of others. A student representative to the school board is authorized in order to facilitate more effective communication and to help promote sound education. What's interesting is this is a unique Monticello policy, that there is no MSBA counterpart. And so there is a high value that Monticello has placed on having student representatives on the school board. And although rare, it's not unique. There are other districts that do this as well. And so the changes in this one from first, that we discussed at first read was just ensuring that the board can have as many student representatives as the board chooses to. Right now, we currently have three. And then just cleaned up some language with regard to gender and unexcused absences. And I suppose we'll just go through all of these and then proven masses.
Let's pause at the end of each one and just make sure the board doesn't have any questions or any discussion. Any discussion on the student representative on the school board? Finding none, we'll move on to the next policy.
And the next one is Policy 418. This was brought forward to the Policy Committee due to legislative update during the 2024 session. So drug-free workplace, drug-free school. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe and healthful environment for employees and students by prohibiting the use of alcohol, toxic substances, medical cannabis, non-intoxic cannabinoids, edible cannabinoid products, and controlled substances without a physician's prescription. And I mentioned cannabinoid a couple of times in the purpose statement there, and of course, as change, as society has trended towards more openness to cannabinoids, school district policies need to follow. And so there is an exception piece on Page Two regarding not excluding or otherwise penalizing a student who would look to enroll due to their enrollment to the Minnesota Patient Registry Program, and that was the most notable change from the law. And I'll pause there.
Is there any discussion or questions on Drug-Free Workplace and School Policy 418? Okay, finding none, moving on.
Okay. 419, this is the Tobacco-Free Environment, Possession and Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-related Devices, and Electronic Delivery Devices, Vaping Awareness and Prevention Instruction. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a learning and working environment that is tobacco-free. The, a couple of changes the Policy Committee made to the MSBA model draft, where I found in Article II General Statement specifically, for whatever reason, MSBA uses a term, if more than one person is present in a work vehicle, tobacco can't be used. And the board, the Policy Committee feels strongly that tobacco should never be used in a school vehicle regardless of the number of occupants. And so we took out that occupancy piece. And then also exceptions, we updated the, amended the language to, in the MSBA model draft to match what is used by the Minnesota Department of Education in reference to American Indians, and so it's referred to in this policy as American Indian. And then finally, the change in legislation was found on Article IV, Item C, and this, this section allows for smudging. The process for smudging defines who, that the building or site administrator is the ultimate authority when smudging is requested. And so, again, recognizing some American Indian ceremonies.
Is there any questions from the board or discussion on Policy 419? Finding none, moving on to 502.
All right. And Gavin, if you could scroll up, there you go, your weight had me there. All right, so 502 is the Search of Student Lockers, Desk, Personal Possessions, excuse me, and Students, and Students Person. The purpose of this policy is to provide for a safe and healthful education environment by enforcing the school district's policy against contraband. This, there was no significant changes to this one. In fact, this was part of our review cycle simply because it had not been reviewed since 2016.
Any questions on Search of Students, Lockers, Desk, Personal Possessions? Finding none, moving on to 503.
All right. Policy 503 is Regarding Student Attendance. The purpose of this policy is the school board believes that regular school attendance is directly related to success in academic work, benefits students socially, provides opportunities for important communications between teachers and students, and establishes regular habits of dependability important to the future of the student. The purpose of this policy is to encourage regular school attendance. It's intended to be positive and not punitive, and it's also in line with some of our strategic goals in terms of 90% attendance for all students. This policy was brought to the committee because of revision due to legislative update in the spring of '24. Specifically, there were some legislative changes regarding excused absences, and so the legislature revised the areas of this policy, of the statute, excuse me, that give rise to this policy regarding what are legitimate exceptions and excused absences. And basically just ensuring that parents and guardians have the authority to... And basically just ensuring that parents and guardians have the authority to, you know, to play, they have the responsibility to have their students at school, and they also have the authority to not have their students at school for legitimate reasons. And then locally, we did make some changes, amendments to the MSBA model draft. We provided the opportunity for individual school sites to provide for some of the rationale for unexcused absences, unexcused tardies, and things like that within their student handbooks.
Any questions or discussion from the board on policy 503, student attendance?
Yes. And Gavin, could you pull that one up for us? And go to Roman numeral two, letter B, number two, letter A, number seven. Thank you. Is that right? Little more. Just where we go. Is that where, where it talks about the, oh, I know I went up to. So we should be on page, page three at the bottom? Okay. Under unexcused absences? Yes. Okay. So how are we supposed to read that number seven there? Where it talks about the unexcused tardies equals one unexcused absence. Is that what you were referring to, the student handbook? Yep, and so, yep, thank you, we missed that one. And so what we would do is, Gavin, if you scroll down a little bit further.
Four B.
E. Four B.
It's tardiness, though. Yep, so, I'm sorry, so Gavin, you were just on it, actually, so what, Gavin, slow down, okay, a little bit down, right there, four B, right there, you're good. Stop moving, you're good. Consequences of tardiness are stated in the student handbook, and so we've missed that one you're referring to, Mark. So, you know, I don't know how you want to deal with that, Chair Zebraath. You know, we could amend it in the moment, but the intention was to have all of those pieces that were the blanks were, to have them fulfilled by information within each building's student handbook instead of within the policy itself.
What did you say?
Motion. Make the correction.
They could, yep.
Motion made to table by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. We'll bring that back. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six and O will bring back student attendance, December 2nd.
Thank you for catching that. All right, and the last one for tonight is policy 505. This is the distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees. The purpose of this policy is to protect the exercise of students and employees' free speech rights, taking into consideration the educational objectives and responsibilities of the school district. This one, there was no legislative changes or changes to the MSBA model, draft model. Instead, this one is simply brought forward as part of our review cycle work because the last time the board reviewed this was in 2019.
Questions by the board or comments on policy 505? I would like to bring these forward as a group, absent policy 503. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jamie Seeburn, seconded by Casey Root, to bring policy 215, 418, 419, 502, and 505 to a vote. All those in favor of passing those as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0 with a tabled policy 503.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniker. And finding that our agenda is complete, we will adjourn at 7:24. We will reconvene at 7:30. We're going to take a picture first, and then we are going to gavel into a closed session for the purpose of evaluating the superintendent. And then, following the closed session, there will be a budget committee that is open to the public. Any questions or discussion about that plan from the board?
The student reps need a picture of us for their assignment.
Student reps need a picture. We need to take a really quick picture.
I didn't know until they just sat down here.
You would have not. I have sense.
So we are adjourned at 7:25. We will reconvene at 7:30 to read the script for closing the meeting for the superintendent evaluation.